Reorganization Council meeting tonight. It's not going to be a regular council meeting. We are choosing a new mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. All right. And with that, would you please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Engler.
Here.
De La Peña.
And I am present. Thank you very much. I would like to welcome and thank the several state, county, and city elected officials and their representatives who are here this evening, our former mayors as well, and our board, commission, and committee members who are in the audience and are joining the meeting tonight. We will begin with a special presentation, and for that, I will move over to the podium. Okay. Well, I guess I'm far enough. Okay. In 1984, the City of Thousand Oaks Council initiated the annual Council Seat Dedication Program to recognize citizens who have demonstrated outstanding service to our community. And this evening, the City Council is pleased to honor this year's Council Seat Dedication recipients, Robert Bland and Chris Kimball. We are so grateful that you were able to be here tonight with us. I will start with Dr. Bland. Dr. Robert Bland was born and raised in Petersburg, Virginia. He studied electrical engineering at the University of Virginia, and in 1959, became the first African-American to complete an undergraduate degree at the University of Virginia. In 1971, he moved to Thousand Oaks to work at Naval Surface Warfare Center in Port Juanimi. And while employed by the Navy, he also worked as a part-time instructor at Oxnard College and Ventura College for 14 years, teaching psychology, statistics, and career and life planning. For decades, Dr. Bland's contributions to our community have been diverse and impactful. He was appointed by the County Board of Supervisors to the Ventura County Affirmative Action Advisory Commission and served as chairperson for two years. He was a founding member of the Conejo Valley Homeless Shelter Program, and he continues to serve as a site coordinator. Dr. Bland was a part of the committee that organized the first crop walk in the Conejo Valley and remains an active supporter of that program to this day. From 2019 through 2021, Dr. Bland served on the long-term disaster recovery group for the Woolsey Fire, helping the survivors of that fire to put their lives back together. And he is currently serving on the newly-formed Ventura County Public Safety Racial Equity Advisory Committee. Perhaps most impressive, Dr. Bland is a founding member and executive director of the Conejo Compassion Coalition, a local nonprofit that provides residents of the Conejo Valley with opportunities for hands-on involvement in disaster relief and the fight against poverty. From New Orleans to Uganda to Pakistan and back to Cal Lutheran, Dr. Bland and the Conejo Compassion Coalition have devoted themselves to serving the most vulnerable among us. Dr. Bland has received numerous awards and recognitions from local Rotary Clubs, the Episcopal Church, the Greater Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce, and even a lifetime achievement award from President Barack Obama. Dr. Bland, you have dedicated your life to tie to breaking barriers and serving the needs of others, and we are so proud to call you our neighbor. On behalf of the entire City Council here, and the staff and the residents of the City of Thousand Oaks, I hereby dedicate seat N17 in your honor. Congratulations. Dr. Bland is here tonight with his family and wife Shirley. And I will give you this on behalf of the city. This is the official, this is your ticket to the seat right here. This one. It's N17. That is your seat.
Wonderful.
And you get to say a few words.
All right. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mayor Pro Tem and City Council members, thank you. I am both humble and honored to be recognized in this way and have this seat dedicated in my honor. But having said that, I recognize, of course, that this is not all about me, but the recognition and accomplishments that have this seat named after me are the result of a number of people standing shoulder to shoulder in the fight for relief of poverty and justice for the oppressed people. So this is something that I recognize belongs to a lot of people in addition to myself. We in the Conejo Compassion Coalition believe that charity begins at home, and we have done a lot of work here in the Conejo Valley to help those less fortunate than ourselves. But although charity begins at home, we believe very strongly that it should not end there. And that's why we reach out to the farthest parts of the world to help those who are afflicted. We believe that charity, if it begins and ends at home, becomes very self-centered and not in the spirit of what it means to love your neighbor. So we reach out to everyone in need that we can possibly reach and extend our hand to them. And to put this in perspective, sometimes it helps if we step back just a moment and take a look at what's going on in this world, to realize that we accomplish, to quote the words of Archbishop Oscar Romero, "We accomplish in our lifetime just a small fraction of that magnificent enterprise that is God's work in this world." And so what we do is we plant seeds, and those seeds get watered by people that come after us. And eventually, those seeds produce a harvest, but long after our time. So we never get to see the results of our work in many cases. And so we recognize, of course, that we have to step back and take this longer look. And when we do so, we realize that the planting of those seeds is an important job. It's important because these seeds become the very seeds that change the course of history and bend the arc of history in the direction of compassion. And so we have dedicated ourselves to this task, and we know that the road ahead is not paved. The road is often made by walking. So we invite you all to join us on this journey as we walk to create a more compassionate, a more just world for the Conejo Valley and for the world. Thank you very much for this honor.
I want to make sure you get to christen your seat up there. There's a sign there. Yes. Dr. Bland, always, always inspirational. Yeah, I'll give it. Always humble, never willing to give to take credit and giving the credit to others. You're absolutely selfless. Our next seat dedication recipient is Chris Kimball. Chris Kimball became California Lutheran University's seventh president in 2008 and, well, after two years as provost and vice president for academic affairs. During Dr. Kimball's presidency, the university experienced more than a decade of expansion, opening several facilities, adding programs and centers, and expanding student research opportunities. Enrollment not only increased, but became more diverse. Cal Lutheran was designed or designated as a Hispanic-serving institution, allowing access to millions of dollars in federal grants and a stronger focus on serving underrepresented students. The university also launched the Center for Economic Research and Forecasting, the Center for Nonprofit Leadership, and the Center for Autism and Communication. It merged with Pacific Lutheran Theological Seminary in Berkeley and became the temporary home of the NFL's L.A. Rams during his tenure. Facilities built under Dr. Kimball's leadership include Almond Commons, the Fredrickson Early Childhood Center, William Roland Stadium and Gallery of Fine Arts, William Roland Art Center, Swenson Center for Social and Behavioral Sciences, Swenson Science Center, KCLU Broadcast Center, and Trinity Residence Hall. Chris served on the Executive Committee of the Association of Independent California Colleges and Universities and the Board of Directors of the American Council on Education, also the National Association of Independent Colleges and Universities, the New American Colleges and Universities Consortium, and the Council of Independent Colleges and Universities, serving as chair from 2014 to 2016. An avid supporter of the arts, business, education, he served on the boards of local nonprofit organizations, including the New West Symphony. Dr. Kimball, we are so grateful for all you have done to help make Thousand Oaks a vibrant college community. And on behalf of the City Council and the staff and residents of the City of Thousand Oaks, I hereby dedicate seat N12 in your honor. Congratulations. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Go ahead. You may say a few words. Congratulations. Absolutely, you can. I'll step away.
Thank you, Mayor Bill De La Peña, and thank you to all the members of the council. This is a very humbling moment. I don't see any way that I deserve a recognition like this. When I think of people like Dr. Bland, the best I can come up with is perhaps this is more symbolic of the remarkably great relationship between the university and the City of Thousand Oaks. It's not every university that can say that it's in a community that welcomes it, supports it, embraces it, loves it, but Cal Lu can say that. And it has been a joy to be part of that relationship over the last, well, dozen-plus years. I still feel that my wife Liz and I are still kind of newcomers to the community, but the years are adding up. You know, I think back on how many things the university has been able to accomplish, and none of them would happen, one, without the terrific faculty and staff and students of the university, the university community, but wouldn't happen also without Thousand Oaks. And in working with the City Council, the present council, previous members of the council that are no longer with us, with city staff, those present and those that preceded them, we would not have been able to do the kinds of things that you described, the growth in the facilities and enrollment, and all of that was made possible in these relationships. I think of the things that we've been able to do together. The community pool is one example. Working together to get the Rams here. That would not have happened without the strong support of the City Council and city staff. It was a complicated arrangement to make, but again, it happened because of what you all did. I think the other thing that I have the opportunity to reflect on is how wonderful it is to see the presence of the university throughout our community, to see our graduates, our alums, whether they got a bachelor's degree, master's degree, doctoral degree, serving in our schools, in our businesses, our churches, in city government, everywhere we look. And to realize that they are there doing good and are accepted and welcomed because of who they are and what they are, and a little piece of them is connected to the university is a great thing. There've been difficult times. I don't have to tell anybody in this room that there've been tough times the last few years. We just recently remembered the horrible incidents at Borderline. And I have to say, from everybody at Cal Lu, we will always remember how much the city helped us grieve, provided comfort, including coming to memorial services and so forth. You did that for the entire region, but the university in particular noticed in those very difficult, dark days that will live with all of us. So I don't have the occasion anymore to speak for the university. I'm just a faculty member now, which means I should be causing trouble, I think. But I know that everyone at the university understands that the university's success and strength and growth is because it is in the City of Thousand Oaks and is proud of that fact. And I hope that the city is equally proud to have the university in the community here and treasure that relationship. I also know that tonight is a reorganization meeting, electing a new mayor, and a further sign that the city, like the university, will remain in good hands, but also an opportunity to recognize the outgoing mayor. And I don't want to stop us from doing that, just a little bit, because she is one of our alums, and we are so proud of her. So with congratulations to you on a wonderful year of service, thanks to everyone here, to the council, the staff, and everyone that is part of this wonderful community. Thank you, and God bless.
And this is the moment. I will turn over the reins to the Mayor Pro Tem. It says so over here on the script. Are you ready, Bob?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I've got this. There are some other presentations to be done tonight, and they directly involve you, so please just stay up there by the podium. And let me call down some people who would like to present some words to you as well. Please, if I could have Lauren Pedersil from Henry Stern's office come down, please.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Senator Stern, I want to, first of all, just congratulate all the council members and Mayor Pro Tem for a successful year, and then give a special congratulations to the mayor. We've seen your unending advocacy on wildfire reform and public safety and everything far and in between. So I just want to thank you for that, wish you all a happy and healthy new year, and we look forward to connecting more next year.
Thank you so much.
Secondly, Assembly Member Jackie Irwin cannot be here tonight, but she wanted me to read this Assembly proclamation for you. It says, "With special recognition and deepest congratulations are conveyed for your leadership and dedication. Your tireless commitment has been a benefit to our community. Thank you for your many years of service," from Jackie Irwin.
Thank you.
Now, from our supervisor's office, we have Vanise Terry coming down for Linda Parks.
Supervisor Parks apologizes she cannot be here tonight. She was disappointed she couldn't come. She's at the redistricting hearing, the Board of Supervisors. I'm not sure if TOTV can show the resolution that we have. The entire Board of Supervisors would like to congratulate you on a wonderful year of service. I'll just read a couple of the wherethis. Whereas Mayor Claudia De La Peña, with her fair-minded and collaborative leadership and through the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic, has skillfully led the City of Thousand Oaks to remain fiscally solvent while overseeing the city's $240 million budget-supported policies to help local businesses and worked tirelessly to ensure residents stay healthy by promoting COVID safety measures. Mayor De La Peña has demonstrated her dedication to the Thousand Oaks community by ensuring greater inclusivity, shown great compassion in her efforts to support the families and the memories of victims of the Borderline Bar and Grill mass shooting, instituted the Community Commitment Award, and been an avid supporter of the arts. Mayor De La Peña has contributed greatly to the City Council and its mission to serve the people of Thousand Oaks, and continues to encourage residents to stay involved in city matters. city matters and volunteer in the community. She remains a stalwart champion of the environment and preserving open space in the Cano Valley, which is what sets Thousand Oaks apart as one of the most beautiful places to live. Congratulations. And Supervisor Parks would like to welcome Mayor Engler. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Madam Mayor, how many times have you been mayor for our city?
Must you ask? It's four times.
Four-time mayor.
Yes.
Well, I have, I have another representative of your past, past mayors is going to come down, Chuck Cohen, please, on behalf of all the former mayors of Thousand Oaks.
On behalf of the mayor's past, I have been given the delegated authority to confer a mayor's, a former mayor's mug on this young lady who's served us so beautifully. Your remarks today at the State of the City were outstanding, and your dedication to the cultural arts and to the people in need in this community have been nonpareil, beautifully done. And so, I, I was looking for some, I was looking for some former mayors, and I would just simply ask that Mayor Jones and Mayor Adam stand where you are to join me in presenting the Mayor's Cup. I do this as a surrogate for Mr. Jones to, to our outgoing mayor. Claudia, we thank you so much for your service to this community.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And we have some more. Don't go away yet.
Oh, okay.
Along with some of our other partnerships, such as we have with CLU, we have a great partnership with our Recreation and Parks District, and I'd like to call down Doug Nichols to please make his presentation.
Jim always has the biggest gifts. Look at that.
That was a mystery.
It's always a mystery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's an honor to be here this evening to recognize a servant in our community and well-deserved recognition. You know, I was, in attending the State of the City today, I noticed that the opening slide of the presentation was of the Wildwood Mesa and Wildwood Park, and I thought how fitting where we have a community where we blend our park district and our city, that that's recognized as a jewel that we all appreciate. On behalf of the park district, with all the accomplishments that have occurred this year, I thought, well, I want to focus on those that we've jointly participated in, because it's an ongoing, decades-long relationship that we've enjoyed. But over this last year, I think you've kind of escalated our working relationship, and I certainly appreciate that. You know, and because I, as I look around our community, and I've said this a number of times, of the many facilities that we have for recreational purposes, those major facilities that we have, many if not most of them have the financial thumbprint of the city on those facilities. Again, a recognition of the relationship that we enjoy. But I also noticed that there are no boundaries between the city streets and the district parks, because they all belong to our community. And many folks probably don't even know that we have a park district, because it's just a community. And sometimes-
Yeah, all the complaints go to the city council.
And we like it that way. So there's no complaints from us on that regard. But I think with, with your latest stint as a mayor, I wanted to point out a couple of things that, that we've recognized that have happened under your, your role as the mayor. One of which is, is the Cano Open Space Conservation Agency, which I know you are a part of that agency board as well, which is another, if not one of the most obvious to many people, probably one of our most favorite joint partnerships that we have. But this year, we were able to swap some properties between the land beneath the library and then the Rancho Petreo Community Equestrian Center to help better align our missions and to, you know, just kind of make things flow a little bit better. And that, that took a lot of work, and I must recognize the staff that put a lot of time to that, but thank you for your role with that as well. Then also, we jointly funded COSCA with four more rangers to help with the environmental protection that we need to have, and as we move into more of the conservation role rather than the acquisition. And again, that's happened underneath your helm. And then also, we were able to extend the La Srobas Trail reroute because of the RASNO accommodations with their donations, and I know you were actively involved with that as well.
Seven years.
Yes, just, just a short window of time, right? And then recently, we added some oak trees and landscaping at the Olympia Farms Area Number One, which is part of the COSCA as well, which will be a great asset to that area. So make sure you keep all these feathers in your cap as you think about all the things that happened. And then the city also granted the park district $3 million towards a, towards a construction or reconstruction, adding to the Alex Fiori Thousand Oaks Teen Center and also the Goble Adult Community Center. So we're going to have a great backyard for the teens out there and certainly enhance that. That, by the way, is a $4.6 million total project, and construction is, is happening shortly here. And then also, the city granted the park district $1.5 million towards the Cano Creek Southwest, which is, is under construction. If you've driven by there, we've got that well underway as well. And on top of all that, some of your favorite things here, we were able to reinstate our annual fireworks display with the Independence Day, and then we were able to bring the teen summer musical back to the Forum Theater, which I know is another favorite of yours. We are able to expand some at-risk and vulnerable population support services, and also actively work together in emergency planning and preparedness. So I just, I'm glad I had the opportunity to kind of highlight some of that, because I know you're an avid supporter of many things, and, and as you look at all the many accomplishments that have occurred over the year for your, with your role as the helm as a mayor, I want to focus on some of these special things, because I know some of these are your, your favorites. So, so with that, CRPD has a special gift for you that we hope will help you to enjoy comfortably the outdoor city concerts, TO Arts concerts, and our favorite, the CRPD outdoor concerts, and be able to not only enjoy them, but enjoy them in style. So with that, I'm going to ask our general manager to unveil our special gift here.
Oh, look at that. Everybody see that?
So now, when you go, you can enjoy the music in style.
Yeah, absolutely.
So again, thank you for your year of service.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I really appreciate that.
And we have one more presentation, Miss Madam Mayor, from the Chamber of Commerce, Danielle Borsman.
I do not have any chairs for you. Claudia, you've enjoyed a long-time partnership with our chamber and 2014 Woman of the Year, and worked on so many initiatives with us this year. This has been another really challenging year for our business community, and you've always encouraged our community to shop local first, especially our small businesses, kept the outdoor expanded dining for our restaurants that desperately needed it during this 2021 year. We've worked a lot around housing this year, and while we haven't always seen eye to eye on all the issues, I really appreciate all the respectful dialogue that we've had between myself and my team, as, you know, with you, and just want to thank you for your service. These are gifts specifically from our small businesses, so Canaho Awards, an engraved paperweight, and then flowers from Exo Bloom. So we just want to thank you for your service, your longtime service, not only this year, but just congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And now, Madam Mayor?
Yes, I wanted to just say really briefly, the, I have to thank President Borgia very much for the luncheon today for the State of the City address. It was a different venue. It was a completely different setup. Everything was different this year, and, and you just went with the flow, and you just did it. You didn't ask questions as to why and all of that. And so, thank you for sticking with the plan. I appreciate that. It was a first, and I thought it came out really, really well. So congratulations on putting together a very successful event. Thank you.
Now, Madam Mayor, may I invite our city manager, Drew Powers?
Well, I had high hopes about doing Friedel on the size, but alas, yet again, he has a way of doing that. Claudia, it's such a pleasure to be here, and, you know, we've, I've had the pleasure of three of your mayoral terms in my tenure here with the city. This is probably the most eventful of, of those years, and from the very first moment, we talked in December about what the year ahead was going to look like, we knew it was going to be full of challenges.
Yes.
And a heavy workload. And I remember having the same conversation with Councilmember McNamie as he was coming on brand-new, apologizing in advance based on the workload that was there. But you have handled it, as you always do, with grace and professionalism, and the fact that you've been able to steer us through this time, from COVID going in and out of meetings in person, meetings virtual, managing. It's not easy for those that don't understand at home to go back and forth and to leverage all the technologies and to, to be able to manage all that, and the way you have is amazing. Took up a waste toller agreement, various housing items, land use considerations, affordable housing, Hillcrest Christian School property purchase was a huge lift, and the permanent supportive housing. It's really remarkable, if you step back and think of the volume of things that have been through, and to be the mayor through all of that is extremely difficult. So your executive team and on behalf of the organization that you do so much to support wanted to put together a package of things we know you love. Claudia and I share a love for good coffee, good wine, and good food, and so this basket reflects all of those things, and we wanted to make sure it was ample enough that Ron got to take part in that as well, because it's really that family impact when you're doing VCTC Executive Director interviews, and you're on Lavco meetings, and you're all the things that are above and beyond your daily time in the council, that the executive team and the city staff see all of that and understand all of that and appreciate the work that you've put in for so many years for us. And so, on behalf of our entire team, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm packing up, Bob.
Friedel should have brought you a wagon.
I know.
By the way, I'm not sure, but I thought that, that the concerts in the park are supposed to be low-back chairs. Is that, is that, just checking. Claudia, on behalf of the city, and this is why I am up here, on behalf of the city, city council, I'd love to present you with another plaque for your collection-
Thank you.
-of, of city plaques.
There it goes. Thank you, Bob.
And then as, as you know, I do some woodworking, and when we decided we would get a small plaque from the city council, I insisted that we have a wood plaque as opposed to something else like this. So we have a nice bamboo. It's sustainable for you to remember this year with us.
Oh. Wow. Such wonderful, Bob. Thank you so much.
And then, and then finally, I understand that you, you like to go to a chicken restaurant around here in town, something the-
Chicken?
The, the-
Papa?
The crazy chicken, or the, oh, the Moody Rooster. The Moody Rooster. And your colleagues on the council have gotten your gift certificate for that.
Really? That's fantastic. Thank you so much. Wow.
Now, we can go back up.
Now, we can go back up. Okay. I'll grab this, and this, and this. Oh, you guys came prepared. Look at that. That was a nice surprise. Thank you very much to all of my colleagues for doing that as well. Yeah, so, all right. Let me just find out where we are on the agenda. So, okay, now we go to item C, and that is 5C, remarks by council members and outgoing mayor. That's me. Okay. Councilmember Adam.
Hey, thank you, Claudia. Bill de la Peña, my long-term colleague, what, about 12 years now? Something like that? Yeah, long time, long time to work together. First of all, let me congratulate you on the Community Commitment Award. Nice touch, recognizing these people that work behind the scenes that never get any recognition, and you took it upon yourself to make sure they did. So that was a very nice thing that you did, I thought. And secondly, there were, there were a lot of things we did this year, but there were two things in particular that stood out that you had a lot to do with. First of all, was the permanent supportive housing that we've accomplished here in Thousand Oaks. We have a motel that's been purchased with 78 units that we'll house homeless folks in. Claudia was behind that, and she deserves to be recognized for that. And we also have an emergency shelter coming onboard as well. Big step for the city. We're one of the first, and it's, it's going to be, go a long way to managing our homeless situation. Secondly, we had our general plan update this year, first one in 50-odd years, and I don't think this council ever worked together better than we did when we did the housing element that night. And a lot of that had to do with you, because as mayor, you allowed us to drop the formalities, and the five of us just got into a dialogue with each other, and we discussed it. And it took some time, but we got right through it, and it worked beautifully, and I commend you for the way you handled that as, as our leader. Thank you. And, you know, there's a lot more to this woman than what you see here at the dais, a lot more. She does things far away from City Hall that are very commendable. Your, your efforts to memorialize and have us remember the Borderline families is, is very precious to us. Thank you for doing that. She works with Safe Passage, which is a great program that keeps underserved kids away from gangs. She's active in her church, very active in the church. Her family are active in Five Star. They're all actors. Ron's over there. He's going to give us a few bars from the greatest hits of South Pacific after this is over, but, and her sons both act in the Five Star. One of them. Which one? Luca acts in Five Star, which is great. She works at feeding the homeless on weekends. She does a lot behind the scenes that no one ever knows, but I want you to know a little bit about it. And, and she's raised her boys right. I mean, I was here when you had them, right? When you were with- When you were with them, with child, shall we say. And now, they're 15, 16-years-old?
Yeah, they just turned 16, but the verdict is still out on whether they turned out okay.
No, 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 no. Claudia's raised them right, let me tell you. These boys understand what it means to be part of the community and to be active in their community, and Claudia has made sure that's happened. So, that's also very commendable. So, all in all, a great year, Claudia. Thank you for leading us, and keep on doing what you're doing. You're an important part of this community.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Adam. Appreciate that. Councilmember McNamie.
As of tomorrow, I'll be finishing up my first year here at council, and Mr. Powers' comment was a very accurate one in that he warned me coming onboard that this was going to be a lot of things thrown at me at the initial stages. And I would like to say thank you for helping this council navigate through some very critical points, and that I say it's an honor for myself to be here on the council, serving with a member who was there with the initial general plan, Ed Jones, and that I'm honored to serve with him on the first update in 50 years. And you helped us navigate through those waters, and I appreciate your effort in that area. You set a wonderful tone for the council, a tone that also resonates through the community and all the good work that you do. Not only mentioning the work here at the council, but as Councilmember Adam mentioned, your volunteer work in the community is so very valuable and important. You are a representative of this council and the city out there, and good works always go a long way. Your work with the arts, pushing that forward. I'm a big supporter of the arts myself, but I think the biggest asset that you brought to this council was your representation out there on the dais and in the community, and I thank you so much for that. You're going to be a hard role model to follow for the next mayor, but I'm sure that they will fill the shoes at some point along the way, and thank you so much for doing the job you do.
Thank you, Councilmember McNamie. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember McNamie. No pressure. Claudia, I just, I'm the mayor pro tem, and I viewed my function this year to be not only a council member and do my bid as council member, but to be a direct support for Claudia. We spoke for hours on certain topics, and I use a military phrase, that I was her wingman. And she promptly told me, no, I was her wing protection person. So, I appreciated that, but I treaded the times we've had a chance to talk about different topics and different ideas, and being able to move those ideas forward, such as some of the colleagues have already spoken about, the homeless positions that we've taken. I'm very proud of that as well, and I'm looking forward to having you be my wingman later. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that.
You know, when you go last, you wonder what's left to say. I think I'd just like to second everything that's been said, and I've been on several boards and councils and so forth over the years, but I don't believe I've ever been with a group that has been more compatible and had a united feeling and a great spirit than I have, and I think that goes to your leadership, Claudia. I mean, I really mean that. I really liked the tone you set at your State of the City today. It was so all-inclusive to bring everybody together, and one can tell when he hears you that you really, you really mean it, and I think that warmth spreads out to the community. You know, I really believe that if people see someone who is saying the right things and meaning the right things and bringing us all together, I believe that comes through, you know? I believe it's more than words. I think you have a spirit and a tone you set that is really remarkable, and I've been around here a long time, and I've just never seen a council that was more congenial. And the things you had to cope with, with COVID, and we're meeting here, and we're meeting on Zoom, and, you know, it's very, I would think, upsetting to have to go through all that and still lead the meetings. And I appreciated, as Al said, that, these community awards that you started. You just brought a lot of great people, and that we allow, you know, that you allowed the city to meet. And I bet one tribute that my wife, Joanne, mentioned, that she really believes that you have a feeling for everybody in this community, from the most common person to all people of races, religions, backgrounds, and I think that shows through. So, I've taken too long, I guess, but I really mean what I say, and I just thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you've done.
Thank you, Ed. Appreciate that. Thank you. Well, since this is my last few minutes as mayor, I would like to also acknowledge the accomplishments of my colleagues and that of city staff. I've been, I'm in my 19th year on the City Council, and I didn't think I had anything else or more to learn. And you know what? Every year, you learn something new, and so, that is really what I will take from this entire year. I have learned something new from having a new council here, a new council makeup, and every, and juggling different personalities, different interests, and my goal was to really be able to keep it cohesive. Hasn't been easy all year long, especially when you have a lot of friction in the community that doesn't really need to be there. I sometimes wish people could just find kindness and not criticize others on social media, calling each other names, and, you know, criticism coming from community leaders or people who are well-known in the community. It doesn't have to be, and so, I, it's, I'm learning something new, and I did learn something new. And so, starting with my colleague Kevin McNamie, Councilmember McNamie, I'm, you know, you hit the ground running. As Drew said, it was going to be a difficult year, and it was a difficult year, even for someone as seasoned as myself, or perhaps Councilmember Adam. This wasn't easy, so you hit the ground running, and I feel that you're finding your footing, and I really appreciate, I really appreciate your contribution and your point of view to the discussions that we have. It's important. We don't all want the same opinion. We need different opinions, because with different opinions, we tend to have better outcomes. So, I appreciate that very much, and you're just in your first year, so just buckle up. Thank you very much for the contribution and also giving me the opportunity to get to know you a little bit better, you and Karen. And Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Engler, you know, you were on the Ad Hoc, Homelessness Ad Hoc Committee with me, starting as soon as you were elected in January of 2019, and so, we did that together. We did that together with the Shangri-La Permites, Permanent Supportive Housing, the Emergency Housing Shelter as the committee, and it was a lot of hard work, but, boy, am I grateful for your assistance in this, Bob. I really, really am. We would have not been able to do that without you, and I want Sue to know that. Councilmember Al Adam, as you said, we've been around the block a few times, and what is super-important is that despite, you know, differing opinions, we always respect each other's opinion, and your expertise, your experience in all of this has helped me guide this council. So, that was wingman number two. Well, he was a mayor pro tem. So, this council needed another experienced person, someone who's been on the council other than myself, and you were that person. You were that person, Al, and thank you for keeping it all together on the dais and keeping us on the right path and in the right direction. So, that is something that I value, and even if we don't always agree on things, I know I can always rely on your honest feedback and experience. I appreciate that very much. And, of course, our historian, our resident historian, Ed Jones. What would we do without you? Who would have thought that you would be here during the second general plan discussion? You were here for the first one, and now you're here for the second one. I don't think it's ever happened anywhere in the country. I mean, this must be really a first, and you give us your insight. Even if it was from decades ago, you still provide such valuable feedback that is often misunderstood by members of the community, I believe, because I know you have nothing but the best interest at heart. We all, all of us here on the dais, want nothing but the best for our community, and there are people sometimes in the community that want to misconstrue everything, and I find that unfortunate. So, thank you for toughing it out. Thank you for hanging in there, for providing a historic perspective to everything that we do, and I think it provides guidance not only to us, but also to staff. And our staff, our valuable staff, more than valuable, City Attorney Tracy Noonan and Andrew Powers, our city manager, the two of you are the ones that get it all done. You guys get it all done. And yeah, we've had our discussions behind the scenes, but you know what? I know that everybody wants what's best, may not always agree on that, but the city is in better hands because of the two of you. So, and Ingrid, Ingrid, I have to say, she is the other person who helped us with our homelessness issues, and so many more here at the city. Everybody plays an important role to make Thousand Oaks what it is, a city that we all love and want to live in and want to be able to afford to live in. So, thank you all very much. I've learned a lot more in my 19th year than I thought I ever would. So, thank you. Appreciate that very much. And with that, I would like to go now to public comments, I believe. So, public comments coming up.
Madam Clerk, at this time, we do not have any public speakers.
Okay, no speakers. That makes it easy. We can go to item number seven, and that is the actual reorganization. So, Madam Clerk, will you please open nominations?
Nominations are now open for the office of mayor.
I would like to nominate, if I may, Bob Engler.
Okay, Councilmember McNamie nominates Bob Engler. Are there any nominations? Mayor Pro Tem Bob Engler, that is. Are there any other nominations being put forward? No? Madam Clerk?
Hearing none, nominations are declared closed. Mayor Pro Tem Engler has been nominated to serve as mayor until December 2022, and I'll conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Penya?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0.
The switching of the name tags.
Mayor Engler, at this time, I will open up nominations for the office of Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Engler?
Nominating Ed Jones?
Yes, I'm nominating Ed Jones.
Oh, I am too.
No, I went first.
Okay. It's a tie, per usual, Claudia and I.
Councilmember Jones has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are declared closed. Councilmember Jones has been nominated to serve as Mayor Pro Tem until December 2022. Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Bill De La Penya?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Our reorg has been accomplished. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think we have an opportunity again to speak a little bit as mayor, our new mayor pro tem, our council members. So, if anyone would like to say any words, Councilmember Adams.
Yes, thank you, Bob. Well, first of all, I want to congratulate you, Bob, on your first term as mayor of the city of Thousand Oaks. It's a great honor, and I hope you're going to enjoy yourself. I know you're well, you're going to do a great job. What you're looking at in this gentleman here is the personification of community service, and I mean that sincerely, and his wife Sue in the audience. Sue and Bob, let's get real. I can't even tell you how much Sue and Bob have done for this community. I'll tell you a quick story when I was mayor a couple of years ago. I forget when that was, but it was COVID, and we had to do a lot by video, so I wanted to focus on Safe Passage. That's come up a couple of times. It's a great program. Tim Hagel runs it, and it keeps at-risk youths off the street and away from gangs. They give out food to community members in a cul-de-sac here. So, anyway, I went with a film crew to the cul-de-sac to interview Tim, and you get a little knowledge about Safe Passage so we could put it on the city website. So, there I am with my film crew and my entourage, you know, the mayor, and going there, and I look at the row of food being passed out, and there's Bob. There's Bob, unheralded on a Saturday morning, passing out food. Hey, Bob, how you doing, man? It's great. Councilmember doesn't ask for any recognition. I got the film crew, and there's Bob passing out apples or something. I forget what it was. I say, this is the kind of guy he is. The kind of guy he is, you know? I'll say to him, I say, so, Bob, what are you doing for the weekend? Well, I got a Kiwanis event Saturday morning, and then, you know, Saturday afternoon, we're passing out some food to some folks. I said, well, where's Susan Houston with the Red Cross, helping some, you know, flood victims or whatever? I mean, this is what they do on their weekends. You know, what are you doing, Al? Well, I'm going to watch a football game. I can't hold a candle to the guy. Anyway, I can't say enough about Bob. Long before he was on the City Council, he was dedicated to serving this community, and he's going to continue to do so as mayor, and I'm really looking forward to working with you, Bob. Anything you need, you let me know, and we're going to have a great year.
Thank you, Al. Appreciate that.
Mayor, I mean, Mayor Engler?
Yes, Councilman.
Well, to follow up on what Councilmember Adam said, Mr., Mayor Engler, I need to get used to that now. Mayor Engler is Mr. Community Service, and his wife Sue is Mrs. Community Service, and you do more than just community service. You do national service, really. You go all over the country wherever your help is needed. So, there are two extraordinary individuals, and that love of community service and that compassion and love that you have for the community really translates into what kind of leader Bob is, and so, we know that Bob will do extremely well as mayor, and there's nothing that Bob can do that can be really criticized. So, I have yet to have an argument with you. I don't think you're capable of having one. No, Bob is absolutely fantastic, and his experience as a fire captain, he really knows the ins and outs of government emergency response, and I look forward to you making that a central theme of your mayoralship, if possible, and I'm just excited that you get to represent the city not only locally, but also on the national level with the League of, National League of Cities, for example, and I think the League of Cities as well. You're just made for that. So, thank you for taking up public service once again in your retirement. You will do well, and I so look forward to continuing to work with you, Bob.
Thank you, Claudia. Mr. McNamie?
Mayor Bob, how are you? Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome. I will not reiterate everything that has been said. I second everything that's been said. But I will say this, is that the strength of our community of Thousand Oaks rests with the people who live here, because they take care of their family, look after their neighbor, and are involved in the community. And you and Sue are prime examples of how being involved with the community has a ripple effect, and the goodness of our people here in our community and the strength of it. Everybody wants to live here in Thousand Oaks because of people like you and Sue. And I welcome you as mayor. I look forward to your leadership. Congratulations, my friend.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Is it my turn?
Last but not least.
I always go last, and everybody else has said so much. I first met Sue about a dozen years ago, when we were in the Rotary Club together. And what did she do? She put me to work. She had, I think, she organized like 10 people to do every job that had to be done in our Thousand Oaks Rotary. And when I think of all the work she does, I'm just going to talk about Sue, okay? We've heard enough about you. She goes all over the country, and Bob does too, I think, for the Red Cross, and, I mean, there's never a dull moment in the Angler house. I, I don't know if they're ever home. I mean, they're always out somewhere, and I would reiterate what has been said so far. And to me, it was so logical when Bob ran for city council, and it really scared me, because I was going to run too. And I thought, how am I ever going to beat that? Well, I didn't. But I managed to squeak in, so, Bob, it's been a real pleasure. And I look forward to working with you, and the way you said you supported our previous mayor. How quickly we forget. No, I'm just kidding. Because of what Claudia mentioned about all the support you gave her, I'm here ready, willing, and able. I hope you have a wonderful year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. I appreciate it, and I, I'm looking forward to a very tight relationship with you throughout the year. It's, it's a pleasure for me to be part of this group up here on the dais. As Councilmember, Councilmember Adams mentioned, we, as a group, are, are working well together. We don't always agree. We have four 1 votes, three 2 votes, five 0 votes. We don't always agree, but we always work together, and I'm hoping that I can bring that forward into this next year. Claudia has left a huge pair of shoes up here for me to try to put my feet into, and I can only hope to live up to her expert example that she has left for me. So I want to, want to appreciate that. As, I guess, I get about two seconds here, just to give you sort of a philosophy of how I view our role as council members. We serve you, the citizens. You, you are who we listen to. You're, you are who we try to take into account and, and bring all your ideas to us. We have a staff that is, believe me, I've worked for a couple of cities as a, as staff, and I can tell you that our staff is second to none. And just today, at the, the fine job that the chamber helped us do today for the State of the City address, our members, Alex, was, was one of the people from the city who really made that happen today. We had a large number of people from the staff who, behind the scenes, made it happen. Now, we take all the credit, but they are the ones doing all the work. And I, I hope to have that firm relationship with staff going forward into the next year as well. As people have mentioned, Sue, who I mentioned, I refer to Sue as my better three-quarter. She and I have been in service in, throughout our entire lives, and I'm going to be calling on everyone in the city to embrace that ideal of service to the community, to your religion, to each other, because through service is how we make the world a better place. And with that, I would like to call this meeting to an adjournment. Our next meeting will be at our regularly scheduled council meeting on December 14th. And with that, I'd like to adjourn our meeting.